As you know, we have organized this public hearing because we think that what is happening today in Syria is not only a big tragedy, but has to stop. And the only way to stop is an involvement of the international community, the fastest as possible. Certainly after the no vote on the resolution in the Security Council in the UN, because let's be very open about this. It is after the no vote and the attitude of Russia and China, things are today worse than in Syria. There has been a tragedy, that no vote in China and Russia. A tragedy mainly for the Syrian people, Syrian population, certainly the inhabitants of Homs and other cities in Syria. And based on that fact, as you know, I have sent it on Sunday, a letter to Mrs. Ashton requesting that she should take the lead with other organizations and with the US in creating what we call the Friends for Syria, a contact group that is ready to do far more than simply talking about Syria and discussing resolutions that are not adopted in the Security Council, what is happening today. So the letter that I have sent to Mrs. Ashton was requesting to create such a contact group that mainly should tackle a number of issues. First of all, how can we materially and technically support really the Syrian opposition forces and Syrian organizations who are fighting for democracy and for human rights in Syria? How can we do that? Secondly, how can we create the fastest as possible safe zones, non-fly zones also, at least on the border with Turkey and with Jordan, and adding to that corridors so that people are safe and can be protected, what is not the case today? And three, how can we and how should we extend the sanctions that are applicable to a far bigger number of families that are still cooperating with the Assad regime? As you know already, for more than, I think, seven or eight months, we are asking for a full-fledged sanction regime for 200 families in Syria. Not only for individual persons, but for all those who are involved, families involved. Because there's a big difference to do only sanctions to an individual or to do it to a family who has mainly cooperated with the Assad regime. That are the three requests we have said. I can tell you that I received today an answer from Mrs. Ashton saying and indicating that she will participate in the first meeting of the contact group, Friends for Syria, on the 24th of February in Tunisia. So that's already one reaction from the European side to this tragedy. Second thing we did was to invite two people today so that they can give to this parliament and to the public opinion of Europe a testimony of what is really happening on the ground. Because I don't think that we can imagine what is happening for the moment in Syria. We can talk about it, we can try to describe it, but I think that a direct testimony of people coming... So Mr. Daniel Abdul-Dayen was a few days ago still in Homs. He left Homs, he is known as the voice of Homs, he was several times on CNN, and he is maybe the best placed person to talk about what is happening on the ground in Homs and what atrocities are happening under our eyes and the eyes of the international community today. And also present is Mr. Fawaz Tallo, with a senior member of the Syrian National Council that has been established, as you know. And both are here, and we are very lucky that we have you here and that you can testify directly to the public opinion of Europe and to this European parliament of what is happening. And also that you can react to the initiative we want to launch. Are they necessary, yes or no? Because maybe I have to tell you that this morning I had an interview on Dutch radio, a direct interview. And when I spoke about the letter and the initiative, they said, "Yeah, you want war in Syria." I said, "Sorry, there is war in Syria for the moment. Don't give the impression that, 'Oh, everything what we shall undertake shall create war.'" War is there for the moment, for the people, for the thousands of people that have been killed in Syria. And that's the reason why we thought it's absolutely necessary, as we did already in the past in other cases, that we need to explain, to show the reality and also to show to the public opinion what is effectively needed to end this crisis around Syria. So I give first of all the floor to Daniel Abdul-Dayen from Homs, and then to Mr. Fawaz Tallo, and then immediately everybody who is here has the floor. Also, if there are journalists who want to put additional questions, they can easily do it, because this is a public hearing. Please.
First of all, thank you all for being here in this meeting. What's going on in Syria is the Assad forces, the mercenaries, are just randomly bombarding any single area that's uprising in Homs or in all Syria. After the UN decision that abandoned the Syrian people, the Assad forces for the first time started using rocket launchers and tanks, and they started using helicopters. More than 500 between rockets and mortar bombs and tank shells and flashbangs. And anything that can blow up, they've been hitting us with. There is not one house that hasn't been hit in Homs. All of the people that are being hit by the bombing are civilians, women, children that are still out in their houses. No one can walk safely in the streets. He has snipers all over Homs, all over on the high buildings. They shoot anyone that goes past. It depends on the mood of the sniper. If he's in a good mood, he wouldn't shoot anybody. If he's in a bad mood, he'd shoot a kid, a woman, anyone who passes the street. Every single day we have to pick up body parts, put them in sheets and bury them. We have to pick up dead children from the streets. That's if we can pick them up from the street. That's not if the sniper tries to shoot us for trying to pick up the bodies from the street. We still have bodies underneath the destruction. These numbers, 7,000 or 8,000 or 9,000 dead in Syria, this is not a number. We have doubled it, or more than doubled that number, dead in Syria. We have loads of people missing, people being kidnapped, women being raped. We have Iranians, we've got Iranian troops in there. We have Hezbollah from Lebanon in Syria helping the Assad forces, kill his own people. He calls his people traitors because we ask for freedom. What is he then for killing his own people and getting an out force to help kill his people? They do not just kill the civilians. They dance on the bodies of the people they kill. They take pictures over the bodies. They are not murderers, they are psychopaths. What's going on now is a crime against humanity, and it's a crime against humanity that the world isn't doing anything about this. These aren't animals down there, these are human beings asking to be saved, asking that they want to get rid of this regime, get rid of this murderer. Is that a crime that people said, "We want freedom," then we are called traitors because we said we want freedom? We are bombarded. Our Free Syrian Army is the only force protecting the civilians in Syria. We should support the Free Syrian Army in any way possible. The Assad army are using human shields in hospitals. They have took government hospitals, private hospitals as their barracks. They have humans in there, civilians in there, so the Free Syrian Army does not shoot them. They are putting civilians at their checkpoints, so the Free Syrian Army can't hit their checkpoints. That is the difference between the Free Syrian Army and the Assad forces. We refuse to kill civilians, we refuse to kill innocent people, which the Assad forces will bombard any single area which has civilians in it. We do not have enough food, medication. If anyone tries to get or smuggle food or medication into these uprising areas, they will be shot at, they will be killed, they will be arrested and tortured. So they even are shooting at Red Crescent ambulances for trying to help us, for trying to get the injured out of the area. They would not let them enter, and they will shoot at them. The situation in Homs, not in Homs, in Syria is terrible. We have to start acting and stop discussing and talking about what the ways are. We should find a way and start acting any way possible. The Syrian people are okay with any way to get rid of this regime. We want any way possible to get rid of it. We are not picky, we're not saying we want this and we don't want this. We want to get rid of this regime, it is killing thousands. We need to stop this massacre going on. I have been in Syria, and I don't know 30% about the number of killings. I don't know 30% about what's going on. Believe me, after this regime is false, we will find mass graves. We will find people who are killed, and we will find loads of stories, loads of horrific things this regime has done. Thank you.
Mr. Tallo?
Several years ago, I believed that this eruption in Syria was imminent. I expected a bloody eruption with classist, which classist or a sectarian character. Unfortunately, I was wrong. The Syrian people surprised everyone with a pure and peaceful revolution inspired by the revolutions of the Arab Spring in Tunisia, Egypt, Libya, and Yemen. I had the honor of being present in the first day of the Syrian Revolution at some of the protests at the Libyan embassy and the Ministry of Interior. However, on the 18th of March 2011, the revolution erupted in Daragh and some other cities, spreading to most places in Syria today. The world was shocked because no one expected that this police state can be defeated, especially that this regime was able to seize control over all aspects of the government, including all the sectors of the military and security, in about half a century. Unsurprisingly, the regime used the only language it understands, the language of violence and oppression. However, this time, unsurprisingly enough, the regime's actions had a reverse effect. The suppression, imprisonment, torture, and killing increased people's anger instead of their fear. Consequently, the wall of fear in people's hearts that the regime was building for the last half-century was gradually brought down. The situation that the regime found itself, it was that the people were going to protest, whether the regime was killing them or not. Therefore, the regime's downfall was inevitable from the first weeks of the revolution. Unfortunately, the international community failed to realize this in the beginning. I personally left Syria less than three weeks ago. Almost 11 months from the start of the revolution, the Syrians chanted for freedom and dignity. From the first day of the revolution till now, no one chanted for an Islamic government or state then, nor are they seeking one now. Since those early days, the Syrians only gradually joined the revolution. This gradual increase was not a matter of conviction, but rather a fear of paying the great cost of change. Nevertheless, Syrians joined the ranks of the revolution in various forms and undertook this tool. Now, after months of killing thousands of civilians, imprisoning and barbarically torching of hundreds of thousands, looting and destruction of properties done by the security forces and the militants of the Shabbiha, which the regime militias, failed to maintain the regime's control. The regime was compelled to draft the Republican Guard and the Fourth Brigade laid by Bashar al-Assad, brother Mahir Assad, amongst other units. This led to the defection of military personnel. Facing an imminent death, those defectors had no choice but to defend themselves. As the suppression augmented, so did the defections. And eventually civilians who were suffering from the oppression of the regime joined this new army to defend themselves, creating a force that controlled for some time several parts of Syria, including areas that are only a few kilometers away from the presidential palace in Damascus. Consequently, every time the regime's violent suppression of the peaceful revolution elevated, the Free Syrian Army grew larger and stronger, and the traditional army turned weaker. The regime tried to compensate for this by amplifying the killing, thus escalating the situation to an all-out war in various places. The Free Syrian Army set the main objective of protecting civilians from the regime, which allowed people in some places to carry out peaceful protests, which is the soul of our revolution, and it will remain so. When the revolution started, there were less than 10 protest points on a given day. The number is now, last Friday, about 650 protests, different protests on a given day. The peaceful protests are the soul of the revolution and one of its main objectives. And therefore, the Free Syrian Army objective remained at the protection of those protesters. The Syrian regime has used issue of sectarianism in the worst form since the beginning of the revolution by spreading new rumors to spread fears amongst minorities, especially the Alawists. The regime has presented itself for decades as the only insurance for their future in the face of the Sunni, Arab, and Kurdish majority. This premise is contrary to the recent and ancient history of Syria, which has been home to Christians, Alawists, Ismailis, and Druze, many of whom held senior government position in the democratic system that preceded the Assad regime. This is what the protesters have been calling for since the beginning of the revolution. While the regime tried to fuel sectarianism, during the protest, people chanting "The Syrian people are united as one." This is one you can hear in every demonstration in Syria. The regime could only lie and spread false rumors in order to accuse protesters of sectarianism. In reality, with the exception of very few isolated incidents of retaliation amounting to a single digit, there was no sectarian retaliation by the protesters. Many statements were issued, tens of statements, by the religious icons, revolutionary and civilian groups, calling for a civil state, not Islamic state, where the Syrians are equal, are equal citizens regardless of their religious sects. In addition, we have almost 100,000 video clips of the protest in Syria, none of which has a single banner or slogan nor song of sectarian nature. Therefore, the battle for the protesters remains as the battle against an oppressive regime, regardless of who supports the regime and regardless of whether they are Sunnis or Alawists. The battle will not evolve into the regime's plan for a civil war. The Syrian protesters may very well be able to achieve victory on their own, but this will require more time, maybe months. However, this debate, this debate is one of our significant resources, this deplates one of our significant resources, which is national unity. In the end, the revolution will indeed be triumphant. The sparks of this outburst in Syria will likely ignite sectarian wars in the region around us, initially in Lebanon and later in Iraq, since the severity of the Sunni-Shi divergence is escalating. Therefore, providing aid to reduce the length of the conflict became an independent object, objective, because the revolution will inevitably triumph. Anyway, I will not complete with this paper. I will say two, three main ideas about why this revolution has started. The people of Syria want to get rid of two things. The monopoly of this family, not the Alawists, the family among all the aspects of our life, using all the resources, using the Ba'ath Party, using the Alawists, using all the minorities, using the militias, using everything. And the people of Syria want to get rid of the security state which controls or the aspect of our life. All the reforms Bashar Assad was saying is just avoiding these two things, these two main things. With a security state, we will not be able to have any kind of free election. We will not be able to express our opinion. And now the people is being killed only because they are expressing their opinion. I want to tell you some figures, and I'm not exaggerating. Daniel mentioned maybe 15,000 or 20,000 people have been killed. I think this is true. But I want to say that hundreds of thousands of Syrian people have been imprisoned during the last 11 months. Just at this moment, we got about 100,000 prisoners. All of them is being tortured in very brutal way. Imagine somebody tortured a child of four months in front of his father to make him to confess about something, and eventually this child is killed. This is the way how they are thinking. When I left the country, it was imminent for me to take my family with me because they will be taken hostage. The same with Daniel, the same with everybody. The Syrian people is the hostage in the hand of this regime. Help us, I'm talking to the international community and especially to Europe, help us to get rid of this regime and help us in the future to build a new, free, liberal Syria. Help, be a partner in the change and be a partner with, in our future. It's better than left the Syrian people killed like this and left the fanatic. By the time, maybe they will take, seize, or take over, or take control of the mind of the people. Helping this Free Syrian Army, which will be the only and the main guarantee for the, will be the main guarantee for forbidden Syria of falling in chaos after the falling of the regime, which is for sure it will be within this year. I am not dreaming, I am telling the facts. Let's shorten the time, shorten the suffering, and in this case, we will avoid Syria and the region more bad consequences by this Thug regime, which is ready to destroy everything before it's leaving. So let's get rid of this regime with any means, including, like Daniel is saying, buffer zones, arming our Free Syrian Army, non-fly zones in some places, all the aids and support, and stop recognizing this regime as a legitimate regime. I think this is what Europe can do. And let's have the Libyan example. We know that a lot of people have been killed, but we know, everybody knows that, those people have been killed by Qadsafi. They are not killed by other sides. Everybody having the Libyan example like a bad example, it's not a matter of black and white, it's a matter of bad and worse. If Qadsafi was left to do what he was to do, we will have another Syrbinitsa in Ben-Ghazi. And now we are facing Syrbinitsa in Homs. Yes, Syrbinitsa is, after a few weeks, the people will not be able to defend themselves, and we will have another Syrbinitsa. I am sure we will after that. But imagine that tens of thousands of people have been killed there and imagine about the retaliation and about the future of the Syria by that time. Thank you for listening.
We would not talk with this government. We want this government to fall, not by talking with it. If you want the information about what's going on from the both sides, who is stopping the media from coming into Syria? Are we stopping them? Or is the government hiding the information and they don't want the media to come on the ground? See, they don't want anyone to know the truth. They don't know, they don't want the world to know what's going on. If it wasn't for the media, there would be massacres. The gentleman was talking about the 1980s. His father killed 60,000 people in one month in one city, in a city called Hamma. They tortured them. They, there was things I cannot talk about, it is awful. That was because there was no media. People in different cities in the same country of Syria didn't know what was going on in Hamma. The media now is helping so much. If it wasn't for the media, wasn't for, we were showing the world what the government is doing, that is what's killing the government most, the media. We are filming it, we are getting anything, everything out, everything it's doing, we're showing it to the world. Okay, about the UN intervention, we are with it. We did not say we're not with it. If you go on, all the protests that are... If you go on all the protests that are in Syria, you will find them holding up SOS. We want the UN to come in. That means the Syrian people want the UN to come in. We don't care how, by troops, by no-fly zone, by supporting the Free Syrian Army. We want any kind of help. The problem is no one is doing anything about this. We haven't got any support until now. How are we getting the videos out? People have said, if there's war in Homs, how are you still got net? How are you communicating? That means you're a liar. People have told me I'm a liar most of the months. How are you talking live to CNN if the Syrian government has cut off the net? We have devices like Began Satellite Internet. The government cannot cut this off, we have satellite phones. The government can't cut that off. We are using this to upload all the videos, to talk to all the channels, to CNN, BBC, to get the news out. If we are cut from all these devices, we will be bombarded. Once we got the camera up to the roof and we had it on live, CNN took it, Al Jazeera took it, everyone took it. Their bombardment went down fifty percent. They stopped bombarding fifty percent less. About the religious leaders, I would like to say something about this. The religious leaders did not start this revolution. Young guys started this revolution. From eighteen to twenty-seven or to thirty, they went out in this revolution. It was not the religious leaders. We went out from the mosques, not because it's an Islamic demonstration. It is because we can get thousands in that mosque. It's the only place we can gather that much, that big amount of people without the government finding out. That does not mean we're Islamic or we're selfie or we're gonna start killing and terrorists and bombarding. That's not what the revolution is. That is what the Syrian government is giving the picture out to the whole world. This is not how we act, this is not what we do. We want Syria to be freedom, it's freedom for everybody, that's what we're fighting for. We do not fight anybody. We just want freedom. We're not gonna fight anyone for the color of our skin, for this, this is not us. This is what the government is fighting on. This is why it's wanted to do sectarian war. This is the last card he's got. The only card that's playing until now is sectarian war in Syria. And about political forces, I don't want to look outside, I don't want to look at the Syrian National Council. I know inside Syria, everyone is together. We have no forces, we are not spread it, we are all one. After we have got rid of this regime, after this president Bashar Assad is gone, then we will start talking about forces, about everyone wants to do a political force. This is not time for political forces right now. We have to all be united or to all be together. This is not time for, outside are maybe a bit apart, but inside, on the ground, in Syria, everyone's together. No one's fighting with each other, everyone's together heart to heart. Everyone's trying to help with everything they've got, even if their house, they are sheltering. Military people, Free Syrian Army in their houses with their children. No one's fighting, everyone just wants to get rid of this regime and wants to, we want to finish this war. It's been a whole year now, we're getting tired. Not getting tired by the Syrian Army, by the Assad forces. We're getting tired seeing no response from the outside, no help from the outside. Every time we say, they will do something now, the UN will come up with a decision now. That's how we sit in Syria. We get happy, we wait for the meetings. We think something will come out of that meeting. Then nothing comes out. No one does anything about it, we feel abandoned again until the next month. As they send the Arab League monitors, they did nothing in Syria. The only thing the Arab monitors did in Syria was the Syrian Army backed up a bit so we could smuggle in food and medication. That was the only thing we want from the Arab monitors. And any time the Arab monitors went in the area, the Syrian Army went out. And when Arab monitors came out of the area, the Assad forces, the Syrian Army went in and started killing again. Thank you.
The peace talking with the regime is useless. Anything will remove this regime and in the same time peacefully and the same safe souls will be accepted. But the regime will not accept that because simply they want to stay in the power. And this is not accepted by us. The Arab Initiative were talking about Bashar Assad stepping down for his, for the vice president for a transitional period. And what's happening, they refuse that. It means at last, the regime is refusing all the political solutions. So what about the only windows still open, which the, somebody call it military intervention? I called it military help. The Russian is giving the Syrian, this is the role of the Russian, the Syrian regime, political cover, and they are giving him weapons. And we want a political cover and weapons from the international community. And we will do the job by ourselves. Now, how much there will be, let's talk, nobody is talking about people on the ground. Nobody talking, the no-fly zone is the only things maybe that we can't handle, no-fly zone alone. Maybe this kind of help will be calculated according with very critical limits for not to be, with the full scale unless we need it. So there will be no Russian influence in Syria anymore. Even if they support the revolution now, they already lost. They already lost all their interests in Syria, including their military bases. Nobody will accept us anymore. I think Russia is making a very big mistake by this stupid veto they used before one week. They waste a chance, not for us only, to save souls, but for the regime to have a very peaceful transition for the power. Regarding, so we are talking about military help by arming our Free Syrian Army in the buffer zones. This is very clear, it's not for the civilians only to be protected and for the soldiers to run away, to hide there. No, it's a place where we can start our liberation army to liberate Syria. Fast more than we are doing now. To have one organized army, which be with a central command, which will not prevent these groups now from being a militia, local militia. Regarding the technical help and help through media, I think the political message is very important here. A very clear political message for those people who still support the regime. I mean by the Alawis, because they control everything on the level of security and the army. To say that this regime, I mean, this family is over and we are going to take it with any price. This is very clear message and with all the means. By the international community, all those supporters will start to think, to disconnect their destiny by this regime. And maybe in this case, we will have the chance for a coup or something by the Alawis because they control everything. So, but unfortunately, we don't get this kind of messages. Every few days, we got some officials from Europe and America who said, we are not going to have any kind of military intervention or help for the revolution. And this is a bad message. I will tell you frankly, maybe after one or two months or three months from now, believe me, I am sure that the international community will give us arming our forces. I am sure about that because this is the only choices left by the army. So let's do it now. About the technical support, I will mention something. Sometimes it's by technical equipment. Sometimes, for example, by, I don't know how to say it in English, when they stop the security and the army of using its communication equipment. Charming, charming for their air forces, for their group on the ground. It's something you can do it without paying a price. Regarding the Christian minority, I will say, there is nothing to do. We should worry about the Alawis-Sunni crisis. There is no crisis at all with the Christians in Syria. There were not in the past, for thousands of years, there is one massacre happened in Syria, except one massacre in nineteen eighty-sixty between Druze and Christians and the two minorities. There is no problem with the Christian minority in Syria. This is not the issue, it's something that the regime keep talking about. I will say one thing, one example from our very near history. During the forties and fifties and sixties, we got a prime minister and the prime minister had the power by that, not the president by that time, he was a Christian. The chief of the parliament several times was Christian. The Ministry of Religious Affairs in Syria, for some times, was a Christian. It means he is controlling the sheikhs who is delivering species and it was accepted by the people. So there is nothing. And by the way, some religious leaders in Syria is divided. Some of them was very clear that our destiny in Syria is not connected for any regime. We are here and we will stay here and we have been safe. It's have been said by Patriarch Hazim, of the room of the Orthodox, for example. So this is an example how there is no problem with the Christians. And there is no incident, by the way, since eleven months with the Christians. About, as we're talking about religion, let's talk about the rule of the Mufti and Tam Sheikhs in Syria. Mufti is an employee. He just say what he have to say as an employee. This is simply, this is the role of the Mufti. He got no respect among any Syrian for his religious, he is just employee. The president assign him and remove him, whatever you want. And just right now, he can give you something and after one week, he can change his mind according to the political agenda which he is following. Now regarding the other sheikhs, I want to tell you something. We had, we used to have some sheikhs whom was very respected among the Syrians. They lose a lot of their credibility just before they are not supporting the revolution very clearly and openly. So the standard now is not whether he is close to God or not. Is he close to revolution or not? Nobody take care about his past. This is the main thing. So those people now is like the classic opposition, like me, they are following the young people in the revolution. But they are not being followed, by the way. And by the way, the democracy is, yes, it's possible here in Syria because it has been tested before and because we are a human being at last. Why the democracy is accepted in Turkey, for example, or in Malaysia or in India, why the Syrian people, who I am sure they are very well qualified and civilized, don't deserve the democracy? Let's have our experiment. Maybe we'll make some mistakes. This is usual, this is normal. But at last, through the democracy, we can manage to fix everything. Now, there is, I almost finished, sorry for that. About the opposition, about the opposition, classical opposition. Because like Danny said, the opposition inside who is doing this revolution is already united. Those people is already united, they got one vision. Maybe they can be to contact each other, to have one group and one political body because of all this pressure. But at last, they have common vision and by the way, they are helping each other with a very creative way. Military help, medical help, and we know about a lot of stories about that between the cities and towns. And so it's the matter of the classical opposition inside and outside of Syria. And this is decisive expression about that this opposition inside Syria is represented by the National Coordination Council. And the opposition out of Syria is represented by the Syrian National Council. No, this is not true. There is a lot of opposition figures inside Syria. They are somehow helping or trying with their political experience, the revolution, but they are not appeared and they are not inside the National Coordination Council. And also those people out of Syria, there is, some of them came from, like me, came since only few days, some days from Syria. And there's, some of them has never been opposing the regime before and some of them has been spent all their life after Syria. So it's a matter of not unifying the opposition. They will not unify according to the standards of Mr. Nabil Al-Arbi or some countries. We should have common vision about the future of Syria and what's happening now and we want what we want and we will give for the international community. I think this vision is already exist with the people inside. All we have to do is take this vision and make it applied with the political programs. Very clear political program. Anyone join this vision, it means he somehow he is representing this revolution. At last, the SNC, Syrian National Council, which now may be the most close to the revolution. We are not the leaders of the revolution. Nobody can say that. And nobody of those can order fifty percent inside Syria to make a demonstration, by the way. This should be, we have a role to play in this revolution. Somehow like Foreign Ministry of the Revolution, the voice of the revolution outside, but we are not the leaders. So when we come to last point for some aids, for example, for the revolution inside Syria, we just heard a story about the aids which have been given by the EU, which according to your regular should be given through some NGOs like Red Cross.